Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, October 24th, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. We have a special guest tonight that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Student of the Month from Farmington Elementary, 6th grader Jack Hathaway. So, would everybody please stand?
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the nocturnal light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? O'er the skies and bright stars will the perilous fight, for the ramparts we watched burst so gallantly streaming? O'er the hills there, o'er the fountiers there, they go through the night, where the flag was still there. O' say the stars sang a song of glad and red, for the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Let's give a round of applause for Jack Hathaway, Student of the Month, Farmington Elementary. Thank you, Jack, you did a great job. Okay, Ms. Bettis, take the roll, please.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, October 24th, 2016, as presented.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Move on to item five, community events. I think we have Executive Director of the DDA, Kim Doold, has got some good news for us tonight. Mr. Squires, from the DDA? Okay.
Good evening. We're going to talk for just a moment about the Chili Cook-Off, one final time this year. I wanted to give out a few thanks, and if I miss anybody, I do apologize. You're all in my heart, I just, sometimes I, that's why I don't like to do things by name necessarily. But first off, I want to give a huge thank you to the DDA staff, Teresa Manuel. She did a fantastic job. She's very detail-oriented, and we are very lucky to have her with the DDA. I also wanted to let everyone know that Grindstone Smokehouse in Westland, they were our first-place restaurant winners. They were also People's Choice winners, which amounted to $600 in prize money that they contacted us and said, "Keep it." So that money went back into the pot for our charities. A couple other thanks, I wanted to thank the Garden City Police Department. They were there, kind of making extra crews by the night before when all of our stuff was set up. They were there all during the day for us, and also that night while some of the equipment was left. The Garden City Fire Department, also working with them, they reviewed our, they kind of reviewed our maps this year to make sure that everything was good, and that we wouldn't be blocking any fire lanes, that sort of thing. And of course, our City Hall workers that came over and set up a tent, and I believe you recruited voters, and...
Recycling.
And recycling, yes, so that worked out well. I wanted to personally thank our judges, Mayor Walker, our City Manager and Police Chief, Bob Mury. We had several City Council members, Jay Lee was there, Pam King, Pat McCarge, Jim Kerwin. I hope you all survived that just fine that night. We had Senator Kenezak, Commissioner Anderson was there with us, and we also had a few DDA trustees, John Fleming and Steve Valente were both there. I said Pam. I said Pam, didn't I say your name?
Yes.
I thought I did, okay. Mark was there cooking chili, he wasn't a judge. So I wanted to thank all of our sponsors, all of the volunteers, the vendors, and most particularly, I would like to thank my friends and family who, for several weeks every year leading up to the cook-off and that day, allow me to abuse them terribly, especially my husband. You know, a lot of them are on their feet, they're there at 7:00 AM in the morning, and they don't stop until the job's done, which, you know, might be 8:00 that night, so I want to give everybody, all of them, a special thank you. So, to move on with the presentation, we started this last year in order to try to get more volunteers. We told the volunteers that we would donate to charities of their choice, a certain amount of money, it's determined by how much money actually comes in, per hour worked. So, the following charities were represented, Memorial Elementary, Garden City Rotary, Garden City High School Project Grad, Garden City Kiwanis, Mayor Monroe Baptist Church Faith Riders, the Autistic School Association, and St. Thomas of the Apostle Parish. In addition to those, we had, we also had some volunteers that asked for their monies to be donated to the Garden City Goodfellows, the Straight Farmhouse, and our Home Pantry. So, while we have four charities, those three I just mentioned, plus United Needy Family, that the money from the cook-off is split evenly between them. However, the checks presented tonight will not be the same amounts due to that, due to the different volunteers. So, I'm going to get on with that. Who do we have first? And if representatives for the Straight Farmhouse and Garden City Museum could come up. So the Straight Farmhouse was awarded an initial $3,250 from the proceeds from the cook-off. The additional amount brings it up to $3,795 that's being donated to the Straight Farmhouse. I don't want to get a shot at the end of all four of you guys.
Next is United Needy Family.
And the President of United Needy Family, Phil Baccasio. Unfortunately, with United Needy Family, the people on that committee are also all Goodfellows, so the money went to the Goodfellows, the extra money. So, Needy Family did get the $3,250. And if Pat Ryback could come up and join us? Our Home Pantry is awarded $3,610. Should buy a little bit of food anyway, huh? And then, Garden City Goodfellows has co-chairs, my husband Jeff Doold and Dave Spatiri, if they could come up and accept the check for Garden City Goodfellows, please. $4,075 to the Garden City Goodfellows. It's going to buy a lot of smiles Christmas morning. That's right. And that is, other than a group shot here, we're done, so for another year, anyway. Just again, thank everybody that had anything to do with this, whether you just attended it, just anything, because we cannot do it without all of our volunteers and our residents. Pardon me?
How were the numbers this year?
No, monetarily, they were about the same as they were last year, so...
I just want to say thank you to Kim Doold, she does a lot of work to make this happen, and Teresa Manuel. Okay, next we'll move on to item six, comments from state and county officials. I see we have Commissioner Anderson here, does he have anything for us tonight? Looks like he does. Never known a politician that doesn't like to talk.
Yeah, thank you. I want to congratulate the success of the Chili Cook-Off. I just tried to total it in my head, and it's over $14,000, isn't it? Almost $15,000? That's phenomenal, that's phenomenal to all these good causes in the city of Garden City, that's great. Real quickly, wanted to remind everyone about Make a Senior Smile. Allison, I appreciate over, that my, when I'm not here, you've been able to bring it up and remind folks. It's Saturday, November 5th, 8:00 AM, at the Maplewood Center. Volunteers are coming through, but certainly more are needed. Now we only need cooperation of the leaves to start dropping, and I don't know if any of you have any power to do that, but Mayor, maybe you can put in a special request.
Sure, I'll make it happen.
And I'm wearing a pink tie today, one of the reasons is that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'd like to encourage everyone to consider ordering a Breast Cancer Awareness license plate, which I sponsored when I was in the State Senate. And all the money from the sale and the proceeds of that license plate go for screening and treatment for those that are uninsured or underinsured, and all that money, like I said, goes to a great cause, and it's accessible to anyone affected by it, and as we know, in rare cases, men are even affected by breast cancer. And that is accessible all over the state of Michigan for care, for those that are affected by it. And you can, if you're interested, you can go on the Secretary of State website, and you can find out the information of how to get one of those license plates, or go to Secretary of State locations, and I think we're going to have a portable Secretary of State here for the shredding day, which is on November 5th also, right? It starts around noon or something like 11:00?
It starts at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. And so folks can come out to there, and I believe they'll have the forums and be able to do it for them there, order the plate. And you don't have to wait till your license plate expires either, a lot of people think they do, and then by the time their plate comes around, sometimes they forget to do it, so appreciate the support for that. Also Cherry Hill is progressing, although much slower than we'd all like. It is finally happening, and so hopefully they'll get quite a bit done before we start seeing snow that's up to our knees. Thank you all so much, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, question.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, petitions and communications, we have none tonight. Move on to item eight, our public hearing, the first one is 8A, the sidewalk program, special assessment role. Anybody wishing to speak on this, please come to the podium and state your name, and your comments. Okay, I'll ask one more time, anybody wishing to speak on the sidewalk special assessment?
I know, who's paying for that?
The residents that had their sidewalks repaired, the sidewalk...
Who's paying for that? Run by the Red Dog. What are you doing?
I'm trying to answer you, it's the residents that had their sidewalks repaired. They had their choice to do it themselves, or our contractor that, which they got a better deal on, and now we got to assess them for the amount of footage that they had done.
They got done on the, the building, on the south side of Baton, no sidewalk at all.
Yep.
No sidewalk at all.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing, and I'll open up the next one for Hubbard Reconstruction Necessity, and to prepare for a special assessment for Hubbard. Anybody wishing to speak on Hubbard Avenue? Okay, I'll ask one more time for the Hubbard Reconstruction. Okay, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Move on to item nine, the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items 9A, 1 through 4.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any discussions from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes 7-0. Move on to item B, the study session, what's council's wish on B1?
CC.
And B2?
CC.
Okay, we'll move on to item C, C1, special assessment sidewalk program.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve the following resolution, confirming special assessment role number 4228, 2016 sidewalk project.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes 7-0. Item C2, special assessment Hubbard Reconstruction, necessity to prepare for...
Mayor.
...special assessment for Councilmember Lynch.
I move to adopt the following resolution, directing the preparation of a special assessment role for 2016 Hubbard Reconstruction.
Can I hear a second?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Discussion from the table, from the general public?
Who's paying for that?
This is the residents that live alongside of Hubbard Avenue that was just reconstructed. We got to prepare the assessment now. We have to have two public hearings, we had the first one tonight, and we got to prepare the numbers. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes 7-0. Move on to item 10, public comments, for items that were not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and there is a five-minute time limit. Anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Buckner.
Al Buckner, 1516 Middlebelt. I went on the city website to look for the approved version of the 2016-2017 budget, and all I found was the proposed budget, so it'd be nice if we can get that on there, so I don't have to go to the state website to get it. Couple of things I'd like to bring up is the fact that, one is, like, appreciate, thank the city for getting our street once again patched for the third time this year. Won't be long, the way we're patching it, that we can probably just name the city, Street Patches, because it's unreal that you can't go no more than 10 miles an hour down our streets. And I know we keep hearing, year after year, the mayor talk about his city speeches, that, you know, he wants the roads fixed. Well, in eight years, how many has he gotten fixed? And we keep hearing there's no money for it, but yet we hear, and we see, 70 votes up here for over, almost $700,000 for a parking lot at the city park. And then, if you're going to do something like that, when you think that you would took care of City Hall and the police station, because that's where you make the bulk of your money from, it just seems like there's no thought in what we do, there's things that we won't done, self-centered, things that we feel that's best, and really it's not. The other thing I want to talk about tonight is the foreclosures. I mentioned a little bit last time I was here, that the city sort of learnt their lesson, and wasn't able to have too much of a pizza party this time, because they got their act together, went out and warmed with people. But the 17 homeowners that didn't get worn are paying for it dearly. And I know you got, you're going to have probably people come up after me, this is a big deal, but we know where their heart is, most likely they set on it. But the fact is, some of these people you put out on the street, with kids, single parents, and the thing of it is, if they'd have been warned, been given an opportunity, it wouldn't have been this way. It's left a black eye on Garden City government. Yeah, I know you say all cities do that, but why do we have to follow the course? Why couldn't we have been different? Why couldn't this been handled different? It wasn't. And I guess that, you know, in the long run, the ones that were, made the backroom bills, the one that caused this to happen, will have to pay for it. And I know some of you are smirked about it, make slight comments, but you know what, it just reminds me of one thing. I often wondered about this, when I share this a lot of times in church. God said that he had to enlarge hell, and now I think I know why. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Jones?
I'm sure it's going to be mentioned at the council table when you get to your comments, but just in case, I didn't want to leave it out, this Thursday's another big event in Garden City, our trunk or treat. Hopefully, the rain will be gone by the time that starts. Makeup Day is Saturday, if the weather's too bad on Thursday, but we have, like, last count I heard, 60 trunks, and well over 1,000 people committed, and a couple thousand more have shown interest in it. So it could be a great event, bring out your kids, your grandkids, your neighbors' kids, anybody, kids 12 or under, should have a good time in a safe environment, with a lot of extra entertainment taking place, and it'd be another example of the community coming together for a good time and for its citizens.
Thank you, anybody else?
Kevin Hunt, Garden City. I just wanted to straighten a couple things out, that I know Mayor and Council, the City Manager have covered over and over again, but we'll try another education process for our buddy that just ran out the door again. Number one, I go down his street all the time, 40 miles an hour. 1516 Middlebelt, correct? We've heard it over and over again. You can go 40, 50 miles an hour down that road, you don't want to do 50, if the police chief's in town, but no problem at all, I don't see any potholes on that road. Something he needs to understand, I've said it before, council's said it before, mayor's said it before, everybody does, but for some reason, his ears don't work, it doesn't stay in his head, I'm not sure. We have a budget, that the state gives us so much money towards roads, they use so much for county roads, we get so much for our own, city-owned roads. The parking lots are completely different. You better get that budget up there for him, so that he can read it. Doesn't matter whether it's a proposed one, or it's the real one, or what it is, it doesn't make any sense to him, but if we had it up there, maybe he could read it again, because there is definitely a big difference between the roads, and the parking lots, or the building maintenance, whatever it is. Needs to go and educate himself. As far as the foreclosures, from everything I've seen, and every court they've been throwing at us so far, this city did everything correctly. They were notified over and over and over again, over a three-year period of time, from the county. Wasn't the city's job to go out and knock on their doors, you guys went over and above this time. Didn't need to do it, they've been tossed out of every single court out there. Why does this keep going on? If we didn't have a person like that, and the one in the background that is one of us puppets, you wouldn't have to spend extra hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on the frivolous lawsuits. Maybe if they'd quit that, we'd have some more money in the budget to be able to do something else in the city. Maybe we could squeeze some money out for a sidewalk or his road, which, no, I understand that roads, it is an amount of money that's fixed that we have to work with each year, and we're staying within our budgets, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, Ms. Bettis, you have anything for us tonight?
Um, yes. First of all, I lost a election worker who had worked with us to make sure that we've got good-flowing, fast-moving elections in our community. Her name was Margaret Hasselhun, and sometimes they called her Lucy, and she was just a joy to work with, and we lost her late last month, and I just wanted to send my condolences to her family, and just let them know how much she was appreciated, especially now during election time, because we can't do it without those election workers who making sure everybody is getting through the line as fast as humanly possible. So, speaking of elections, of course, we've got election coming up, two weeks now from tomorrow, and I just want to make sure that if anybody needs an absentee ballot, that they can get that absentee ballot application off of our website, or you can come into our office, or you can call our office, and we will mail one to you. The Saturday before election, November 5th, we will be open from 9:00 to 2:00, as will every clerk in the state of Michigan, will be available there for emergency absentee ballot applications, and if you need something, and you didn't find out, a lot of people, you know, have got a hospital, or out of town trip, that they didn't find out until the last minute, come on in, you can, we can get you taken care of, and make sure that you're able to vote and be a participant in this election. So please come on up, I have absentee ballot applications here, if anybody needs one right now. Also, on, but that Saturday, in addition to election, being open for election business, it is Community Shred Day. So yay, so bring all of your documents that need to be secured, we have a mobile shredder on site, also the Mobile Secretary of State, as Commissioner Anderson mentioned, will be there. You can get your license, you can get your Breast Cancer Awareness Plate, you can get your tabs, you can get any of those things, you can change your address, you can do all of those things, it's really convenient, and like I said, your birthday doesn't have to be for six months, and you can still do it. So it'll be right here in the parking lot, and we would ask that if you would be kind enough to bring your non-perishable food items, so that we can give those to the... enough to bring your non-perishable food items, so that we can give those to those families who might have a need here in Garden City for our home pantry. And I appreciate that. Also, our DPS Director has asked me to mention that DTE, that we just want to thank DTE Energy for providing a grant, and Relief Michigan for coordinating a volunteer effort on last Saturday at City Park. They donated 15 trees of various species, and they were planted adjacent to the new parking lot, and they're going to go to grow into beautiful ornamental trees, and they were just gorgeous, and that was a grant that was obtained by our DPS Director, and so it was a very nice addition to our city at no cost to the citizens. And also, we just want to give a shout-out to Dr. Ali Hossain, and he is the owner of the new urgent care facility on Ford Road, just west of Merriman, and he went a little above and beyond what was required of him, and with this landscaping in front of the new business, and the flowers out there, I'm told, are beautiful, so I'm going to go see them. And the director wanted to make sure that he acknowledged that effort, appreciated. We love it when our citizen, corporate citizens participate in our community in such a beautiful My boss says hi. He's coming back as soon as he can.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobs?
Just a couple things. One, hopefully we see all the kids and everybody out at the trunk or treat. I missed last year, but I heard it was really good, so I'm looking forward to that this year. And once again, I'd like to thank Kim Dole and Theresa Manuel for the Chili Cook-Off. I wasn't a judge, but I was involved with one of the teams, so they wouldn't let me vote for some reason. And, but the money's raised for the charity is great, and I think that's, you know, every time we ask our community to step up, they do, and I think it's just great, and the work they put in is just phenomenal. So, thank you. That's all. Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch?
Yes, first of all, Hubbard Street, it took us a long time to get to where we are, but driving down Hubbard, what a remarkable difference, and I can't wait to see it finally finished. I know they're still doing some dirt filling in and some things like that.
Sidewalk approaches.
Yes, the sidewalks. I know it's been, it's a long-going project, but it's well worth every minute that it took to finally be able to drive down that street. And, you know, I hope the same will be said of Cherry Hill. It's taken a long time to get those two outside lanes, but they're fixing some of the base. Hopefully, by the time they get the black top on it, all of us that drive that two-mile section will be very happy that it's done. And then one other thing is, I know that all of council received a letter over the past week from, I'm going to assume, just because she has beautiful writing, I'm assuming it's a she, it's one of our seniors, and she brought up something in the letter that she was disappointed that we, as the city, paid money to resurface the parking lot at the high school. And I just wanted to let her know, as well as other people, the high school parking lot was done from the Garden City Public Schools. It's not the city of Garden City. I know we do a lot of parking lots and streets and things like that, but in this particular case, the Garden City Public Schools thought they needed to be done, and that's why they got done. So if you want to say something to them, please feel free. And if I would have had your name on the back of the letter, I would have given you a call myself, but you didn't sign the letter. So I just wanted to make that known, so that she knew we read the letter. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Squire?
Just one thing. I wanted to thank Ms. Derone for keeping in touch with the residents as the Hubbard Project was going on, and keeping them happy, because I know a couple had concerns and said something to me, and you were there and spoke with them personally and took care of it. So just a great job. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerwin?
Just another thanks to Mrs. Dole and entire staff. That was a great, great time, and I would say the chili was pretty good. I watched Mrs. King eat about 30 bowls. 15, I guess. But anyway, it was very good, and I'm surprised, it's a lot of money, and that all of the organizations could really use. And I think you asked, head count? You don't have a clue? Got to be a few thousand people there, anyway. So, anyway, I think that was very good, and I thank you to everybody concerned. Also, try to shop local, do your best, because we do sell a lot of different things in our community. And also, watch, it's getting darker earlier, and it will, in the next few weeks, get dark very early, but watch out for the kids out there. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Jack for coming in and doing his little speech up there with us. I thought it was very nice, and I look forward to seeing children in our, our meetings, pardon me, and I think it's good to have them around, get a feel for all of this. Also, it's Chili Cook-Off, couldn't beat it. It was wonderful. You went way over this time, and I think it was absolutely perfect. Thank you very much for everybody who was involved in it. Other than that, oh, I do have one question, though. Gentleman that came up obviously had a grouchy kind of attitude about the budget not being on the website. It is on the website.
I believe it is, but I'll check it out.
It is. Okay, we probably want to look that up and make sure it is for him especially.
The gentleman has my number.
Yes, I'm sure he does.
He knows where to go from if he needed it.
Right. No, we're very good. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember McCarrick?
The landscaping near the urgent care is gorgeous, but right next to it is the pins oil, you know, business, and even before the urgent care was done, you know, I always drive past there, and it's like, wow, they have landscapes so nice, and they keep the flowers, and we have a lot of businesses that keep up their properties, which is really great, but they, the pins oil has just always been a little above and beyond too with the flowers. So now with the two next to each other, I think that it's a good call-out to other businesses to, you know, just pump it up a little. So congratulations to both of those businesses. Last week, I attended the Wayne County Community Development Block Grant Advisory Board meeting, and I am very pleased to report that after a year of meetings that were often not very pleasant, but through the year, there was a lot of compromises made, mostly really in the last month, and a lot of that has to do with the involvement of our county commissioner, Glenn Anderson. The fact that he got involved, got other commissioners involved, our, the resulting, the county is now going to be taking 10% of the money that was usually went into the communities for the, you know, block grant programs. They are going to have some large projects, three large projects in the Wayne County area that will be a competitive bidding process, but the other 90% will stay in each community. And Garden City uses, most often uses our money to do housing rehab, and also to offset some of the cost of the senior citizen staffing. At the beginning of the year, they wanted, the county originally planned on taking almost 60%, 50, 55% of the funding, which would, you know, really is, was really a hard thing for the communities to swallow. But again, we got together, and it was really amazing. And also, Mr., Commissioner Anderson, at the last meeting, I had a question about one of the items, and I kind of questioned him, but he followed up. He came up to the podium, and he said, "I'd like that in writing." And so, along with what we're doing, you know, there's written assurances from the county that what they said is what they're going to do, and we have it all in writing. So, Commissioner, thank you. Just one other thing, Ms. Derone, the trees, the, thank you. That was really great. I drove by there, and they, you know, it's going to be wonderful. I was kind of hoping I could get over and help, but unfortunately, I was involved with another gardening project. So that's about it. Please be safe. Oh, I know one other thing. Garden City Goodfellows, they got a good check from the Chili Cook-Off, yay, but the Goodfellows have also sent out letters to, into the community asking for donations. You know, if you haven't sent back your check, hey, $5, $10, anything really helps and really adds up, and the more they can do that, it's a little safer, you know, mailing the checks. So my check is in the mail. That's it.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank Jack Hathaway from Farmington Elementary for helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance, and congratulations on being Student of the Month. We all mentioned the Chili Cook-Off, Kim Dole and Theresa, and all the volunteers that make that happen, but we need to thank all the residents that come out and support that. Look at all the thousands of dollars that we just had donated to support Garden City charities, especially with the holidays coming up, the food pantry, the Goodfellows, no kid without a Christmas, so it's just fantastic that the money that's generated in this community by our residents and all the volunteers that we have. It's a great city. That's all I have. No further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
[INAUDIBLE].[1747.23]